This is our report, not their report.
Okay, but that's all, that's ISO. That's, that's really, that's, that's just appeasement for everybody in here. That's what it's all about. Well, everybody, though, everybody knows if, if you listen to the, the governor at that town meeting, it is a done deal. There's nothing, nobody has to worry about anything getting trucked out of here. It's not getting trucked out of here. It's gonna get capped. We all know that, you know that. Why don't you just tell everyone that's what's going on?
Uh, I think everybody knows that. This was, this was... This, this report was...
You can't fight it.
What I've already said.
That you can't fight it.
We need to fight it.
Well, I don't know how you're gonna fight it unless the whole administration goes out of there. Chris, Christie said...
Get your friends in Roxbury. Get them all out of here. Get them to these meetings.
Well, you're gonna have to do a protest in the middle of the street with your... I'm talking about...
Please, please, could you ask more, please? There's a good question up here, man. I mean, there's some questions up here.
Oh, oh, well, well, okay. I mean, that, that's all I wanted to say. It's a done deal as far as I'm concerned. This is, this is, you know, it's going nowhere. It's already a done deal. Christie, according to that town meeting, he's not gonna do it. He will not do it. He's not gonna do it. He's not making the decision. And, and ahead of the DEP is his big buddy, Bob Moore.
Yeah, he's not doing it, right? Has he made the right...
No, it's not right. I'm not saying it's right, but it's already a done deal. Still didn't fight. It's ridiculous. Do you need to lay down?
Oh.
Can you see the two dollars?
Uh, Schultz.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll have a way with Saksanam also the President or React Global Press Report Committee, and then you all... Thank you. The county council is ranked, yeah, they equally. And also see why you haven't replied to me for five days. These are waiting for the spending to make their announcement. I'm not here for political gain. I'm not here for any financial incentive. And I don't know why you're shaking your head, because I have no desire to be on there.
Good for you.
You have political gain.
Yes, Mr. Schultz.
Yes. Was the decision to follow this plan unanimous across the board?
Uh, what do you...
The decision you made, the announcement you made tonight, was it unanimous to every single council member?
Well, except for Freddie, who's not here tonight, so he hasn't seen it. So I can't speak whether he will or will not be here at this point.
Everybody else was unanimous.
Correct.
I can't hear you, Jim.
I'll go with what Jeff Tittle said. Um, I had already written down when he read my mind, how can you trust NJDEP after everything that's happened? They caused this problem.
I agree.
So how can you go forward trusting them again?
But this, this, when you say trust them, what do you mean?
You outlined your entire plan around this.
They don't, you're based upon our...
It was ranked...
No, it's not. It was our professionals' report that we paid attention to. Mr. Zelli, who's had a ton of experience in doing these kinds of projects.
And Mr. Zelli's report was excellent.
Yes. That's why this council is taking its lead on that, not the NJDEP's lead.
But you're still sitting down and allowing them to do whatever they want?
You're giving up the trust.
Because you're saying you have no jurisdiction here.
We don't have jurisdiction, you know that.
But you have no other way or means of doing anything like filing a lawsuit, going to the media, holding a press conference? You're doing too much. Is that true?
What was the question?
Can you go to the media? Can you hold a press conference?
We've been doing this, we took them to court. I mean, Bob, there's, did, you can come up with several ideas, um, and, and we can take them into consideration, but, no, just throwing things against the wall, just for the sake of throwing them against the wall doesn't, you know, accomplish a whole lot.
Then you were laying down.
We haven't laid down. And it's just been shown by our actions. And, and the mere fact that we put this report together to pay attention, to look to see what was, in our professionals' opinion, the best thing for the health and safety of the, of residents of Roxbury Township.
Right, and, and everybody's gonna have to live in fear in the next 20 or 30 years.
More than that, or more than that.
And that's in the best interest of the people.
I, I don't know that.
You can ask anybody here that deals with it.
Okay, but where do you get 20 or 30 years at that time here different from our professionals? So...
Well, that material could be there forever, and let's say the cap does get dried out in maybe a seven-year time frame. Well, if the cap raises and water gets cut in, the whole process starts again. And see, there's a problem with the state of New Jersey, because there's only one inspector for sanitary landfills in the state of New Jersey. And how many landfills is that, Jack?
Contaminated, cap contaminates like 12,000.
12,000. That'd be 12,000. So we'll probably get an inspection maybe once every 20 years. So you're relying on the DEP to do all this?
No, it also took into, into legitimately concerns of hauling it out as well, and the, and the impacts it would have on the municipality and its residents.
Right, let's, that, that's true. There could be potential.
That's correct.
You're absolutely right. And, but it is a, it is a guaranteed success if it's trucked out at some point in time.
That's, that's the trucking out process is not guaranteed success, because it has not been done anywhere near the scale, period, anywhere that anybody's aware of. So how can you say it will be successful?
Mr. Zelli, congratulations.
Mr. Zelli. Yeah, well, first, regarding your number of hours, the amount of landfill sites and inspection of it's causing confusion, I just want to make sure the record is correct. There's about 12,000 or 18,000 no-contaminated sites. Just a small amount of those are actually landfills. Of those, there's probably what, 21 or so, or less than that, sanitary composite line. Then there's another couple hundred old municipal, like we work for municipalities. The far majority are the ones under the Segregation Reform Act, the ones that are more common, and they have quite a few people to DEP, plus they have licensed segregation professional, that licenses are online. So there is not that many landfills that are on the radar that are like this. This is probably their only one. Regarding your questions, I, I understand about how do you know? And, you know, right now, it's what, the 15th of April, and, um, with the, they throw the gas extraction wells in, they put the 21 new wells in, and they actually put them in properly. It appears that they put them in fully penetrated, and there's something, uh, prior was about 64 feet of linear feet of perforated pipe, and now it was over 400 feet. So they, they've made quite a difference in the amount of open screen to the landfill. Pressure should be to make sure they're online before it gets hot, and that the, they put another layer of epoxy shell when they're done with the extraction wells in.
Right.
Now, your question regarding the disposal and trucking, if you want to repeat that question, I'll see if I can answer it.
I, I agree with the question.
Yeah, as well.
That's okay, because there's so many holes in that landfill right now, in terms of where the trucks have been, where all, all the cap has been disturbed, that all the rain we've had over the last two weeks, even today, is all penetrated back in.
The mayor, the mayor council is pressuring the DEP to put another layer of epoxy shell immediately after they're done installing the gas extraction piping, because that, the, the advantage of epoxy shell, it's not so much that it is sealing it like you would with a 40 mil liner, it's that when it rains, Bob, it deflects and, as I mentioned two hours ago, prevent the precipitation, the recharge in the landfill. Trust me, the, the, the mayor, council are pressing for it, to force, to hand out a DEP put that, that epoxy shell in immediately after it's done, the, the piping.
We, we talk about the health threat, and, um, we know there's been a lot of bloody noses and so forth, and, and there's only been hydrogen sulfide tested for in landfill. We have paid with residents' help for our own testing, and we found formaldehyde levels a hundred times over. So do you have anything to say about that? Because I know we have Chris, the reporter, because we share it, and that was the information as soon as we got it, we gave it to you, because we knew a lot of the residents, and especially the kids, were experiencing bloody noses.
And if I'm not mistaken, Mark, we had our experts look at that report and came, and come back that, and I don't have it right in front of me, but I believe there was a response that came back and said that the standards that you're looking at for the, for formaldehyde were within the, and I don't know which agency it is for formaldehyde, were within the, uh, levels that are common background and common information, common from sites such as this. Now, I can get you the actual information on that, Bob, but I think it was provided to you earlier. Go back and get that.
We haven't seen that.
Well, may not, maybe, it may not have gotten to you, and I know we had emails on that and responded to those emails. Maybe, maybe they weren't provided to you, but we'll, we'll look into that.
Well, what we're concerned about is kids.
Well, I think everybody's...
And why haven't, hasn't the township or the DEP done, done any additional testing out there, including formaldehyde test? Because this was just one report from us in one moment of time.
They have done some mechanical testing, and it's also some testing that we've asked them to go back and do as well, too.
If that wasn't formaldehyde, and some canisters, or stuff like that, that's... Um, my, my last thing, because I know my time's up, so I'm supposed to keep waiting here, um, is something I'd like to submit to mayor and council, which is, uh, React and the members, the 2,700 members, um, that formally support Truck It Out, um, formally request you hold a hearing into the Fenimore landfill disaster within the next four weeks. The hearings will establish a public record that can be used by, but not limited to other jurisdictions in determining who is at fault, what were the consequences, and why it happened. The hearing will be documented by a court stenographer, as well as audio recording and possibly video recordings as well. Anyone affected by the Fenimore landfill will be allowed to testify, as well as submit written, audio, and video exhibits. Thank you.
Morning, Ms. Gabrielle. Uh, here is curiosity. How much did your report cost?
I mean, I don't have the final numbers yet. It's been a year, it just finished today.
You have no... Well, give me some approximation of what it was.
It's been ongoing. We could, we could try to calculate that and get that to you, uh, but quite frankly, this municipality didn't stop and say, let's stop the report here and there for the dollars and cents. I think it goes to the same sentiment that we've heard from just about everybody in this room tonight. Dollars and cents weren't the driving cost. We might make sure we, we...
I know, it was my money, so...
So we'll, we'll, we'll get that information, please.
Okay, um, the report. When did the council discuss it and make the decision that you made and announced tonight?
Uh, that release was discussed this evening.
So you just discussed it this evening as a...
Uh, via phone calls and emails earlier, between us, not collectively.
Okay.
Uh, but it was forwarded to me, and then, uh, forwarded out, and I spoke to...
Clarify, is the release not the report?
Oh, just the release, yeah. You're talking about the release that I read.
No, no, I'm, just stating you made that, your, your decision on this.
Yes.
I'm asking when the council discusses this a whole, and then the decision...
We, we didn't discuss it in, uh, in, um, in a meeting format.
Are you leaving?
No.
You just emailed and talked to me?
No, I, I told you, I told you...
That's how you make the decision?
That they vote.
Yes.
You said you should send out to each council member, and each council member was given an opportunity to say whether or not they would object or not. And you didn't discuss it as a, you didn't sit down and bash it out and, and give thoughts back and forth?
During, during the week, there's been comments...
That impacts our lives.
During the week, there's been comments, I suppose, that Mr. People, uh... Three days ago, or four, three or four days ago. Uh, and I'm sure other members have had conversations as they read the report, too, amongst each other, not, not in collective format.
But it should be done collectively, as far as I'm concerned. You should have a good discussion when you're deciding the fate of our lives.
Yes, and it, there was a report.
How many hours did you then calculate that you discussed this? When did, when did you act in case of...
Oh, oh, when, the last two years or what?
No, no, no. The report, you're basing the decision...
No, on the report. That my comment, my release is different than the report. That's why I'm trying, I'm trying to get it clear.
Your statement of the decision that you made...
Correct.
That, that just told Mr. Schultz that each and every one of the council members agree with.
Mm-hmm.
I'm asking you...
Yep.
You received the report. Your decision was made, um, based on that report, was it not? That's what you have to tell us.
Yes, yes, yes.
When did you receive that report?
Uh, last Wednesday, Wednesday.
So from that point on, you all just, just emailed or called each other, but you never sat in a room and discussed it?
No, we never, we never got together, no.
I, I just find that unusual, because I, as an elected official, I know as a school board member, we always sat, and, and because when you exchange...
And ideally, we would like that, but we, this was more important. We didn't have time for another meeting before this meeting. We didn't want to postpone this meeting so we could sit down and talk before giving you the presentation. This was the most important step. This was...
No, the most important step is the decision you made. So I, I would think you would...
This is a big step.
Have weighed that very, very, uh, seriously as a group. Okay, so you answered my question. Now, you've said you're all in agreement to the, to the statement that Mr...
Correct.
Riley, Mayor Riley. Uh, I would like to know if Assemblyman Bugo agrees with that decision as well. Do you agree with that?
That's not my decision.
Now, I'm asking you as my assemblyman, do you agree that the waste should not be pulled out and should be, that it should be capped?
You don't understand. That's not my decision. As I sit here...
No, I didn't ask you. I asked you what your opinion, what your opinion is.
It's not my decision.
Right. So because you, you're sitting there as council, you can't tell me as my assemblyman what your opinion is?
He's here in his role as his, as a municipal attorney this evening. He does not partake in our decision-making. Uh, he advises the legal actions.
Well, I, I find that very, very disturbing, because as my assemblyman, I should be able to ask that question and get an answer. That's right.
Thank you.
If there is any conflict of interest, if I can ask my assemblyman what his opinion
I can tell you that there's no conflict of interest, that in fact, um, the question was posed to the state's Ethics Council, and there was a unanimous vote that there was no conflict of interest in my position.
Well, thank you for that, because we just read about the State Ethics Commission and how this undue influence by Governor Christie, so I really take that with a... Now, you say you made a decision. You said, if I understood you correctly, I may not have understood correctly, that there was not sufficient, uh, data, enough sufficient data that proved to you conclusively that trucking out the waste from the landfill was the best, best and safest solution? Is that, is that what you said?
Basically, no.
Right. So then, if you don't have the data, then tell me exactly, how did you make your decision to side with Governor Christie and the DEP instead of people who...
All the people of Roxbury Township, and the decision was based upon not just the lack of information. There's been no site that's been able, that we've been able to look for, or anybody's been able to bring up, where there's been a successful removal of this kind of, uh, material. So softly was the closest point possible, and, and we're getting different, varying numbers, but a lot less of, of the C and E fines, the, the wallboard, uh, was being removed. So we don't have a strong, especially in the case with Fenimore, where we're talking about a significant amount of it producing more gas than has ever been seen by everybody I've talked to. Uh, nobody's been able to show it. So, so that's a, a significant part. Yes, it's a lack of information, because it hasn't happened. Just because you say it can't make it true.
I understand it. So you could say to each one of you, each one of you re-elected, you could say 100% that you're confident by capping, by going along with the DEP's closure plan and capping that landfill, that we're going to be safe, that we're going to, uh, have no health risk, that this is going to be absolutely...
Just like you can't sit there and tell me which one is safer, I have to rely on experts, too. That's why we hired an expert.
No, answer the question, Jim. I'm asking, can you tell me? No, no, yes, you say it's absolutely. If you tell me there's still risk with the other one, why, why would you...
I wouldn't be a risk anywhere, but the problem is, is you have to try the true, uh, way of doing it in an untried scenario of never having it done, so there's nothing to point to. Don't try.
Okay, so you're saying there's risk either way? Is that right?
No, we, there, there are no risks according to our professionals in capping. There's, there's no, there's a significant risk not knowing what will happen with the trucking out.
So you're, you're saying you know 100% for sure there's more risk, significant risk, with trucking out than... So, right, you're telling, you're not sure.
No, you're not certain. There's not enough data to draw that conclusion.
So then why don't you rely on the data? Why don't you rely on it?
It's been done!
No, no, no. Now, let me ask our assemblyman, maybe he can answer this question. What completely, you're saying you, you can't go back to the courts and appeal it? I don't agree with that. I said, take my task, I didn't go back to the courts and, and fight it. That's, that's what the people are asking you. Why are you doing that? Why are you doing it?
Some people like this.
Who?
If those people want to announce themselves, they'll stand up and announce themselves.
All right. What is the majority telling you, Jim? Yeah.
I, I don't have enough for a summary, too. They have to talk.
Okay, legislative thing. Is there a solution legislative that we can attend?
I constantly recuse myself of any legislative action regarding this landfill.
Oh, my God, so you're saying...
I'm not getting into legislative actions regarding this landfill. I didn't vote on the other legislation. I didn't participate in any of this issue.
So then, you should recuse yourself totally from this, because you're supposed to be representing the people on this.
Representing township of Roxbury.
No, 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 you were elected as a assemblyman to represent our interests. You're being paid as their council, and we pay you as our assemblyman, and now you recuse yourself from here, not from us, not from the people. Why, what's so funny?
Yeah, what's so funny?
Why, no, 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 the man is... The man is like, we did that, you two sit down and behave yourselves. Why, he's laughing. Why enlighten? It's funny. It's not funny.
When you're in a class accident suit, then you won't be laughing. Then there won't be laughing.
Go ahead. Every legislator is under rules of professional ethics. Anytime a legislator, whether it's, um, in regard to a situation like this, or it's in regard to a personal interest that they may have in regard to legislation that's proposed, cannot participate. They have to recuse themselves.
Can I ask you? I have, I have yourself as council rather than recuse yourself as assemblyman? Why? Because you're paying, huh?
Because you're getting paid.
Well, it's a disgrace, and we'll see. Maybe the Ethics Commission will, will look at this again. Uh, freeholders, a few of us went and appealed to the freeholders. We made them run down the scenario. They said that we contacted you as a council, and that they reached out to you. In fact, that was at the recycling, the council recycling dinner Friday, and was told by a freeholder that they did reach out to you. So what exactly was the mistake? What can the freeholders do? What, what...
The freeholders are limiting their ability. They have passed a resolution that's rewarding this council, and the actions that we've taken to correct the situation on Fenimore Land.
Have you not asked them for it? To help you with, uh, some of their resources? Their legal, their environmental, their, uh, their health department? Why can't you use their resources? They said they would be more than willing to do it.
Well, I have spoken to them, so...
And?
And, we'll continue. We'll continue to speak to them. We, we talked, potentially now doing something with help, but this all took place in the last, uh, week or so.
So you're, will they do...
There's dialogue going on at this point in time, right? There's...
Now, you made your decision tonight, and there's discussion about notifying residents about the situation. How are you notifying the residents, the 23,000, 24,000 residents of Roxbury about your decision?
Uh, the same way we always have.
Which is?
Uh, because it's on our website, we'll do a release in the newspaper, do exactly what we've been doing over the last nine months.
And the reason why you all sent a letter to every household?
Uh, you know, we've been down this road, I, everybody in this town knows. I don't know...
Baloney. No way. I'm sorry.
No, just answer, why don't you send a letter?
What is he looking for? I think six months ago, we asked specifically, and then we did send something out. It's, it's always one more. If, if you want us to put in a letter that says you're going to die tomorrow, then...
No, no, you, you can send the letter about...
I would... You know, we're, we're supplying information to the best of our ability.
No, you're not.
No, you're not. And the last thing is, you're speaking, but I, each one of these council members were elected. I would like to hear from each one of them, and I think everybody else, I want to hear you personally tell us why you made the decision you made that seals our fate, our lives.
He's not gonna answer that.
Oh, they're not gonna answer? Oh, they're not gonna answer? Look at that, they're not gonna answer.
She's asking the question that all of you have answered when I'm on.
We'll get to that.
I have a couple of questions. When did the council decide that you were not going back to court on April 21st? When was that decision made?
Uh, I was away, but it happened last week to council me.
Okay, was every member aware of that? Of the town council that decision made?
No, who, who was the first one? Yes. Rich and I, but I wasn't aware of it.
Then I'm gonna have to say that we asked, Bob, I'm gonna point again, not doing it to embarrass you, but this is where my anxiety and my level, and I've always tried to work with the council over and over again, from my level of mistrust, and quite honestly wanting to move out of this town, is when my sister asked you if a decision was made about April 21st, you said you did not know. She was with me, and so was the neighbor, Greg.
I disagree with you. I said I was not sure, and I'm not sure, I wasn't sure until this evening, we had, we had made that decision.
That's not what the mayor just said.
Well, I'm gonna argue.
Well, I, I wasn't here last week, so I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, discuss what Trish Sparker...
I agree, the argument is about what you shouldn't.
Okay, it just goes back to, I think, this is my opinion, and just like tonight, I have a question. It seems like, and I can predict this whole scenario going through, that the council was gonna agree with NJDEP, and so was our experts and so forth. Why didn't the council wait before they issued their statement to hear from the residents tonight about, this is a forum, we're supposed to have open discussion, open dialogue, give and take, public comments, and our feedback, taken into consideration, but you opened the meeting with a statement pretty much saying your decision? Why, why did that happen?
And it was, because we've been asked more often than not why we haven't, if we've had a week to see the report. It's exactly what Mr. Schultz was talking about. We held off. I couldn't wait until the end of the meeting. It was actually suggested, but I thought it would be, uh, uh, report rights to, to bring it up. thought it would be a court right to bring it up, when I did, so during the Q and A discussion that we're having now, at least you know where we're standing, since we did agree, we did agree that it might not have been-
What is the purpose of this meeting, then, like, what are you doing with the public comments, I know they're all on record, like, what is this information, if you're not going back to court? And Christie, and that brings up another issue here, Christie, I don't know why you guys can't make, and I'm not talking about it in public, like, release, make a big statement, bite the press, channels 12 news, ABC 7-
That's right.
And say Governor Christie misinformed residents at that last meeting, that the dump wasn't an issue for 30 years of stuff being dumped into it, why isn't the council hot about that, that Governor Christie is lying about this community that was voted top 400 in 2011, and whose totally definition of character for this entire community, US leaders, why don't you call it his, and I'm not going to say on the carpet about it, why hasn't anybody taken action over that?
I haven't seen that one yet, because I was away last week, I have seen-
It's all over YouTube, Jim, so- It's not, it's, it's been posted everywhere, Jim, it's been posted, then Deputy, then Gary, he's stepping in there, he lives in town, then he acts in different ways, which he did last, when we were there, come on, give an answer, and a real, real answer, you don't give a shit, I'll take that as a real answer, I'll just, that's all I want, that's what I want, and Jim said the whole council knew, you came here, you guys had a decision already, which didn't surprise me, I'm surprised it stayed here that long, because I already knew walking in what the decision would be, I don't know why we're all here, why we're giving our comments, you won't go back April 21st to court.
People wanted to hear what we thought, and our professionals thought, they've been asking us for this, last year, it started under Fred Hall, and we've continued it, and I think the public deserves to hear what our professionals said, just because, according to you, we only got 50/50 chance of either following the governor or not following the governor, well, following the governor, or DEP in this case, to cap it, and the alternative was to truck it out, I haven't seen the evidence to truck it out, that makes it safer for our residents, and that's going to our-
What you guys have said over and over again, which is true, which is scary, it's a very unique situation here in Roxbury, you've always said you need the science, you need the science, you need the science, we don't have the science, we don't have the soil samples, we don't have them, that's the science that we're missing, that's the big question mark, and it's a huge question, for anybody to say on record, that you know for fact, that methane isn't in there, or there's other materials in there that was dumped in there, when we're all litigation over this, the town and everyone, because of certain things that were dumped in there, I don't know, I give you a lot of credit there, I don't know how smart you are, to be honest with you, go on record and say that you know or don't know what's in there, when nobody's agreeing to it, right? That's pretty scary, so you have to know, how do you know, then how do you know what you're doing is the right thing to do?
That's right.
How do you know?
Even when they're, the, you're not acknowledged, they do it.
There's, I'm sorry, there's no concerns, because I'd like to hear that there's no concerns over what?
You are correct, we're not allowed to take soil samples and do the analysis, but Bob Zellie and his team were on site, correct me if I'm wrong, for all-
We were there for a week.
You can go ahead and answer.
First of all, I've been talking to the council to take samples back from last summer, and there's records in the file, and proposals and scopes, going to Tony Bucow, going back probably to August, we were actually, I think you should know this, we were on site with my crew, a geophysicist to do a profile, and we got a call from the commissioner to leave the site, I don't know if you know that, that happened in the fall, and we were, this council's been very adamant for, I don't know, what, nine months now, but that's the facts, I, you know, I'm not going to get arrested, you need to know this, now, stop interrupting.
Please.
No, this is-
Please, Mr. Zellie, please answer.
What we found on the site, when we were drilling, we observed every boring, all 21, were 400 feet of linear destruction of 24-inch augers, there was nothing of a surprise, everything we saw, we photodoc in every boring, and there's some pictures in the report, we have a depository of all the pictures, there was nothing surprise, matter of fact, H2S levels coming from the bories, which a DEP thought were going to be very dangerous, and one of my key geologists had a Level A cell containing breathing apparatus on site to use, and we've had this senior scientist out there with Mr. Keel, they never had to use it, because levels were much lower than they thought it was going to be, and right now, they're coming up with probably about 1% H2S in the lower wells, so we, the town commissioned us to review and be on site during the construction and augering, and look at the spoils, which I personally did, and I personally took pictures, and I was out there for probably about seven, many of the wells, and if it wasn't me, it was one of my senior geologists.
Okay, I think this is just, I just feel like this is one big science experiment, and it's at the risk of everybody in this room, the children, and I feel like it is such a unique experience, I can appreciate what you did, but I still, there's so many unknowns to it, that it's kind of scary, that our council is agreeing, that made a statement, that listens to the public comment first, to agree with the MJDP, and not go back to court and try and fight, when Governor Christie publicly said, it's because 30 years of stuff that's been dumped in there, and it's, it's just, doesn't make, a lot of this doesn't make any sense to me. I just think he should be, I think he should be, he's the governor, and I think he, he's, I believe he's the boss of the DEP, I just think if maybe some of those things were pointed out, if he's misinformed, that maybe he would change his mind, I mean, can only hope, but if nobody points that out to him from our council, to make him aware of things, and I'd like to also go on record, one last thing, I know my time's probably overdue, I'd like to go on record about health survey, it is a very unique situation, Chris, and I want to thank you so much, because I, you're shaking head agreeing with me, I know just how important it is, I, you know, I hope something tragic doesn't happen, like the Love Canal New York, and I hope that's what we don't see in that work hard history, and where we could have maybe done different measures, and put different things in place, and been proactive, and handled it a different way, instead of ending up with some real tragedy, thank you.
Can you summarize this, or can I have a question, I'd like to know, because I think I heard the mayor, and I heard other people saying, we're interested in the health and safety of our residents, and we want to do everything we can for the health and safety of our residents, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, is it also true that the whole interior Roxbury Township is not aware of what's going on with the air, is that true? I don't think anybody up there can say to me, that they can go door to door, and you're going to get 100% of the people say, yeah, I know what's going on up there, with the smell, and how it could hurt us, I don't think anybody knows that, so, my question is this, simply, and I'd like an answer, like the last time, I'm not going to leave until I get it, and that is, why can't we send certified letters, I don't care about the technology on the web, and all those other things, certified letters to each resident, and more is less, with information in here that says that this is going on at these levels, you can be, you can have hazardous situation by having the air quality away is due to the dump, why can't we do that? I'd like any answer, and I'm not leaving until I get it, but no is not a good answer, and I want to know why, and you also said, Mr. Mayor, that money's not the issue, so, so send out those letters certified, it should not be an issue, now, on.
No, some of the things you just mentioned are moving targets.
No, they're not moving targets, sir, they're not, by the way, they're not moving targets, they're not moving targets, wait, wait, hold on, they're not moving targets, does it, or does it not stink up there, does it, is there, is there SO2s, or whatever the hell it is up there, yes, do we know if there's other stuff, maybe, maybe not, so, no moving target, there is a hazardous, unsafe situation with Fenmore, why can't we tell our residents in a letter that that's the case, certified letters so everyone gets it? And, when I was working in industry, it was less is more, you guys over there, the ruckers should know that, because the people who write their papers, less is more, you give them the facts, four or five bullets, this is what happens, the weather, air gets bad, you've got to get out of the town, or however you want to put it, I want to know, money's not an issue, health and safety, all that stuff, DEP don't care, we're going to send the letter out, right?
We disagree, Carl, we think we've been very-
We disagree, we disagree about what?
In getting information out to the president of our town.
Wait, wait, we disagree about what?
About us getting the information out to our residents.
I would like to know, why we won't send letters out to every resident in this town, a mail letter, you yourself said, I said before, health and safety to residents, and money's not an issue, why aren't we sending that letter? People, some people don't read the internet, some people don't have smartphones, some people don't do all those things, I would like to know, I don't think I'm asking, I would like to question that.
Let's, we have to-
What was that? We have one, you haven't said, I haven't-
Let me try this, because this is this in the nutshell, let's, let's-
One nutshell, yes, one or no, but-
Answer the question, Carl.
Go ahead, answer it, I want to hear when you're going to send the letters.
I'm not, Carl, are you going to let me answer the question, if it's, even if it's no, or my opinion is no, let's get to the nutshell, there are a number of people significantly impacted by this landfill, however, not every resident's health.
How do you know that? How do you know that?
Because I got it from the health-
See, those people, they're the ruckers, they're in the case, they don't know.
No, no, there's nothing, they're, they're, ma'am, ma'am, I understand this, there's no, the plumes, we test the water, okay, there's no plumes in the water in that area, we've tested the water thousands and thou, not thousands, but numerous of times, it's not me, there's no gas, okay, you need the smell, the smell, okay, well, you, because we have notified everybody within the proximity of this, we have sent out press releases, newspapers that go to everybody, but Carl, you don't want just a letter to say, oh, there's a Fenmore site, let's be honest, you said it yourself, you want a letter that says, your health is at immediate risk-
Health and safety of our residents, that made you say that.
But that's all the residents, that's not necessarily the case based on the science.
Yeah, I'm not even asking everybody that drives through this town, anybody who drives through here can have the same issues, Mr. Rats?
But that's, you asked-
I want a letter sent to everybody in this town.
And you've asked that?
I never asked for that before, but I'm asking for it now, I'm not leaving until I hear you guys, that's unreasonable, that's not unreasonable, I want a letter, Carl, Mr. Rats, I'm sorry, we need to move, but I want a letter to everybody in this town.
Good, we will take, Carl, we-
Now, we'll see, you're patronizing me.
I'm not trying to patronize you, Carl, I'm trying to answer your question, but you're up there, there are other people behind you who want to talk, you're fusing-
They want letters too, we want a letter, I want any more excuse, any more nothing, I want a letter, everybody in this town, if we don't get it, well, then you know what, I'll write, we'll write to other newspaper, we'll send something later, so, we gonna get letters?
Write to the newspapers, Carl.
What was that?
Go ahead, write to the newspapers.
You know what, Mr. Mayor, you work for us, I want a letter, and I'm not leaving until I get it, I want a letter, excuse me? Okay, so are you? No, please, I want a better set, you guys haven't answered our questions, I want a letter to every citizen.
I want a letter to every citizen.
There's two of us.
I want a letter to every citizen.
I want a letter to every citizen.
Come on, everybody get up, come on.
Come on, everybody, get up, this is your future, this is your health.
What are you going to do now, Mr. Mayor? Everybody get up, come on, this is important, come on.
You could be clawing three arms in 10 years, you don't know.
Don't, don't, hands behind you, nobody's patronizing you.
Think I'm kidding? Put up Halted Next New Jersey.
You want a word to every resident?
He don't have everybody here.
What's that, Mr. Rats?
Look around.
Look round one.
Look around.
You want letters?
Look around.
Look round one, look round one.
Did you see the rats?
Look round one, you want a letter, and we're not moving, we're not moving until you guys say it'll happen, it's next to you.
Carl, you've noticed that we sent everybody-
We want a certified letter, this is a game for not- we want a-
Carl.
Everybody's on a computer.
We're not moving, we want to get them notified from the L2, or newsletters, and other items.
I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if somebody in town doesn't know that this is an issue, they aren't looking, because they're not-
That's why they're not, that's just not true, I talk to people all the time who don't know about this, as a matter of fact, some people told me, they were told that this is just a little group of people who are just making a big problem.
Okay, man, I am, I'm not either.
And those people that don't know, and they don't live near there, they go to Walmart, and they get sick.
I was, and I'd like to suggest that the town sent out the DOH report that came out on February 4th, it was sent to the town, it excludes the whole town, it was written for the town, and everybody in the town should have a right to see this, so, if you don't want to put a letter together, put, just put envelopes and stuff that in, when I moved here, we got letters from the town, and I'm sure, I'm sure everybody did, about how great everything's going to be, because the DEP was taking over the site, so why not send something that the state sent for the whole town, I don't know why you're so afraid of people in other areas of the town learning about this.
Fucking send the letters!
They're all affected.
I'm sorry, I'm mad, send the letters.
If I lived in another part of town, and my kid was going to high school, and I would want to know, they don't know certain things, and they're sending their kids to schools that are affected.
They have to send out a postcard.
Send the certified letter, Mr. Mayor, remember, we put the window position, you should know what I'm up, send the letters. No, I want to answer that question, I want to answer that question. I'm sorry, sir, you want to take me away?
Take me away?
Because I want to answer this question, they don't answer, I'm not, I'm not deserving anybody, I'm not deserving anybody!
No, no.
That's right, I'm not deserving here, so you can go away, Mr. Carl, Carl-
This will make it, now, it's called channel 12.
I heard the car.
I want everybody, get to sign their cell phones.
Carl, of course, this is in German, and it's not fair to the rest of residents that have it on the side.
So, will the council at least, will the council send the letter that was sent by the DOH, that was written specifically for Roxbury, why won't the town send that letter? It doesn't require you to put any information other than what's already been put together for the town, Mr. Riley, I ask you a question, Mr. Riley, you asked me to come up, I was the next one in line, and now you won't answer my question? All right, well, I'm sitting here.
We'll stay, we'll be there for you till 1:00 in the morning, somebody here, please.
We're going to come back, and then you'll see us, see it, after we all know.
My name is Paris Pals, and I was for the 3:00 screen, so the sun, I know, and you guys, you were on your best line.